I'm sorry everyone that I couldn't be there in person.
No worries, uh, starting our recording. And our broadcast, I have seven o'clock, so I'm looking to our attendees list at the moment, and I'll keep an eye on that. With that, I will defer the chair.
All right, uh, thank you. I'm Ken Swann, I'm actually the vice chair. And um, we'll start by taking the role. So um, just say either here or present, uh, Mr. Shagnon.
Here, President.
Mr. Bennet.
I'm present.
Ms. Scow.
She is not here present, and I do not see her in the audience as yet.
And she is expected.
She was expected, yes.
Yeah, uh, and then, uh, Mr. Junta.
Present.
And I am here as well, so we have four people, we can begin. Customarily, since we have a request for a continuance, we usually do that first, so if no one objects, why don't we just? If we got a motion for a continuance.
Yeah, I'm sorry, just to clarify, it's a twenty-six Beacon Ave has requested a continuance to, uh, May fourteenth.
Does somebody want to move that?
I'll move that, the twenty-six Beacon Ave matter, the.
A second?
I'll second Mr. Shagnon.
All right, so it's been moved and seconded, is there a? Anybody here to say anything about it, or I guess not, I don't see anybody, so is there?
No, it doesn't look like it, though.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll just move to a vote, um, we'll just go around, go around the table, basically, Mr. Shagnon.
Yes.
Mr. Bennet.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Good, Junta.
Yes.
And I vote yes, that's four votes in the affirmative, it is continued. So that gets us to our minor modification for forty Parker Street, and there's someone there to present that, so. We will open, actually, it's not a hearing, we'll just begin the discussion and hear what they have to say.
Sure, uh, Mark, did you want to, or did you want to address the board?
Yes, uh, um. Thank you, uh, thank you for hearing our, uh, request, uh, for minor modification, uh, for our wind turbine. Uh, installation.
I'm sorry, would you?
Yes, I'm sorry, I will, uh, my name is Mark Ritchie, I'm, uh, uh, owner and president of Mark Ritchie Woodworking at Forty Parker Street. And I'm here with Chris Carroll, uh, CFO of Mark Ritchie Woodworking. So, um, we requested, uh, a minor modification to our special permit, which was granted, I believe, in two thousand eight. And we are only requesting a minor, uh, portion of the, um, uh. Uh, mo- of the, uh, permit to be changed, uh, we are, um, have been doing a noise study. Uh, every year, uh, we have it done every year, but most every year, and we have had no changes whatsoever to the noise. Uh, or sound, I should say, levels emitted by the wind turbine, uh, in all the studies. And it is a very costly and time-consuming and compli- uh, complicated study to do, actually. You have to go at all different times of the day and night and set up monitors and, uh, it, um, has. Uh, every time we've done this study, the, the noise has not changed at all. So we are asking to, um, uh, um. Omit just that portion of our annual, uh, compliance and, um. We're hoping that you can, uh, you can do that for us.
And one thing to mention, too, is if a legitimate noise complaint, um, arose, we would conduct the study at that time.
I, I would like to, uh, thank you, Chris, I would like to add to that legitimate. Because we do from time to time have neighbors that say, hey, there's noise over. Uh, your wind turbine, uh, could you, uh, address that, and of course, we look into it immediately. Uh, but sometimes these, uh, are just false alarms. For example, one or two or more than that times, we've had complaints when the turbine hasn't been running for weeks and even months. So people don't always know, and, you know, I don't fault anyone, it's hard sometimes to tell where noise is coming from. But people don't always know, so we look, the first, our first course of action is always, when we receive any kind of complaint for our business, is to look into it. So, but of course, and we do that by not just stepping outside and listening to our turbine. But to going up onto the hill, uh, across the street where some of the complaints have come to, because it's a, you know, direct. Uh, uh, exposure to the turbine, uh, to other parts of the neighborhood and check on it ourselves to make sure that, hey. But usually, um, we could hear something unusual and, uh. So, uh, again, though, I would like to stress that every time we've done one of these, uh, noise studies, and they take many days to set up. And, uh, uh, quite a bit of work and analysis, and they're actually quite expensive. We have had no changes to the sound emitted from the turbine from the day it was, uh, installed, so.
Uh, through the chair, uh, this is eighty-four, may I, uh, address the board briefly regarding the matter?
Yes.
Uh, just briefly, um, I, Jennifer, our zoning administrator is not here, uh, this evening, but we have discussed this particular matter. I also had a discussion with her and the building commissioner regarding this particular report that goes back a number of years. Uh, and is relatively older, or more permit, at least for, for my tenure here. Um, and I guess the sum result is, uh, we defer the board, but from the office's perspective, there's not a whole lot of utility being gained at this point from receiving these reports. Um, in part, uh, or large part, I would say mainly because from our perspective, um, it's a question of whether or not there are any issues, you know, that are going on there, complaints being received. Uh, we're not seeing any of that, so, uh, in essence, it's not clear was that, uh, the, the cost and the time being spent on this particular report. Uh, what might have been, you know, warranted at the time, uh, of the permitting to address a concern and make sure that it wasn't going to be a problem. Um, you know, as Mark mentioned, it doesn't seem to be providing any utility today as a report, given that there aren't any, you know, complaints that are coming in. Um, so again, we defer to the board as to how you want to handle it, um, here we're pointing back to that, um. In essence, because the office does not have the standard condition that in our more recent permits, that says if something is relatively minor, it might be. Uh, modified, you know, by the staff, uh, if it's in a minor level, there's no language of that, uh, affected any type in this permit, so, uh, it has to go back to the board. Um, but, uh, from our, our office's perspective, it's not obvious that it provided any utility today, so we have no, uh, objection whatsoever to, uh, to remove that component. Um, recognize, of course, at the time that, that there was, um, you know, there was discussion about the turbine and stuff, uh, with that, I defer back to the chair.
Hey, thank you.
For the record, that Lynn, uh, came in as well, so she's here for the meeting as well.
Hi Lynn. Um, does the, uh, applicant have anything else they'd like to say before we get to our questions?
Uh, I'm sorry, actually, Gretchen, I think, yeah, that's fine, I know Gretchen actually wanted to say something.
We have communicated, Mr. Ritchie and I have communicated by email, because we're a neighbor. And, um, around the co- time of COVID, we had never heard anything for years, we never heard a single sound from there. But we could start hearing the sound. And there were, and we've, the response I always got was that there's many noises coming out of the industrial park. And so we can't tell that it's the turbine, but you can see, the first reason why I contacted him. It was because it sounded like something was wrong, because it was made a thought, well, it sounded like out of, like you would expect something to be out of balance. So I only contacted you because I thought it sounds like something's not quite working here. And it didn't stop at, I mean, it was shut down after that, it seemed to be repaired, but you can see, when the blades are spinning. And there's a rhythmic sound, you can visually make the connection, like there's other noise, there's other noises in the industrial park. And you can hear a consistent noise, but when there's a blade moving and your eyes and your. Ears are at the same rhythm, you know where it's coming from, the blades. And so that rhythmic sound has passed, but we can hear, uh, we can hear a sound that we never used to hear.
Uh, so I'm sorry, could you clarify since, since about, you're saying more recently?
You know, yes. So there's sound that we heard that was like the rhythmic sound that went on, I would say that was maybe twenty nineteen, I'm not sure. It was in the fall, I think, and then. It was, I believe, it was shut down for a period of time, and there seemed to be some warp on it, and then when it did start up again. We can hear in our house, like, this noise that we got heard. And in the winter, we can hear it in the, in the house at night, when, you know, all the windows are closed. So to me, I do perceive a change.
Thank you.
Because we went all those years from when it was installed until that time, where we never, we never complained about it, I never thought of contacting the planning office.
Oh, no, I do first, no, I mean, yeah, I'll bring it up.
But I never thought about it until, and, you know, I have good intentions when I contacted you by saying. It's, I would just be out in the yard and I'd hear this noise, I'd say, something is wrong with that, it's not working. Because it had never made that kind of noise.
So is your sense that it's a higher decibel level, or that it's more noticeable than I'm sure, or is?
It's not a high, well, I wouldn't say it's a high decimal, decimal now, just more like a calm. Now, I can't say that I've noticed it recently.
Okay, it's like a background problem.
Yes, yes, actually, I haven't thought about it at all for a while, because it did become like a kind of steady background noise in our house. But I haven't, in all honesty, for a while now, I haven't paid attention.
Okay. Um, the, the next stage, just for the board to ask questions, but is, was there anything else that the applicant would like to say before we ask our questions? Um, seeing none, uh, who would like to begin, uh, which of our board members would like to begin with questions?
I'll ask a few, if that's all right with you, uh, Mr. Chair. Uh, just a couple of questions, when was the last time that you performed the required, uh, sound measurement test?
Twenty twenty-one.
And did the results of that test indicate that the noise met the city noise ordinance?
Yes.
Decimal level?
Yes.
Could you tell me, if you can remember, of the levels that were measured and what the town, uh, city, uh, level. Uh, requirements, if, if you can?
Well, we have that report, and it was submitted to you, and, uh, we have it right here in front of us.
Yeah, can you just, tell us what, uh, what the decimal level, the measured decimal level was?
Sure. So the measured decimal level, uh, at three miles per hour was forty-one dBAs. Forty-three DBA at six miles and forty-five DBAs at nine miles per hour.
Okay.
With typical sound, this, and this is the interesting part, with typical ambient sound levels, meaning highway.
I understand.
Of fifty to fifty-five.
Understood, can you tell me what the city noise ordinance level is? While you're looking, I'll ask Andrew, do you know that, Andrew?
Uh, well, actually, you're just putting up in the screen your section from the code.
Yeah. So, if, if. I, I don't know if I'm the best person, I'm not the best person to interpret that. But let, let me ask another question, then, um. Does the report conclusion, which is signed by an independent engineer certified that. The noise measured at the facility was in compliance with the city requirements?
Yes, it does.
It does say that?
It does say that, yes.
And I take it. That. The test was conducted under varying, uh, operational levels?
Yes.
Could you expand on that a bit?
Sure, so it was taken at, uh, um, a variety of different times, including the typically quietest. Times of the day, uh, during the night, when the ambient traffic noises would be at their lowest. During, uh, and always when it was operating, because the wind turbine, it's not like you turn it on or off, it has to have wind. So, um, and from different wind directions and, uh, at, uh, also during times of. Uh, um, uh, significant ambient noise, or middle of the day, I suppose. But at a variety of different times and, um, uh, over a period of, uh, several weeks. So, not just a single reporting, and it's taken at the, uh, perimeters of our, um, property.
Are the noises recorded representative of your normal operations at the facility?
Yes.
Um, how many, aside from this most recent one, twenty twenty-one, how many tests overall have you done since oh eight? If you have.
We did five, we did five consecutive tests from oh eight through twenty fourteen.
Okay, now, with respect to those five tests, did any of those tests indicate that there was a violation of city?
None.
Ordinance requirements?
They were virtually identical, I mean, minor differences, but that they were all, uh, well within the city or cities ordinance.
Okay, what are these, what does this test cost today?
This test, in, including the report and the analysis, is about. Six or seven thousand yuan, I don't remember exactly.
I order my.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, have you ever received a formal notice of violation from the city regarding noise from the facility? Have you ever received written, uh, notice of via, or a, a written complaint from any person regarding the noise?
Uh, emails from neighbors.
And, uh.
But they were just inquiring about the noise.
I understand.
Yeah, said they were in any ways scientific or.
I understand, I understand. When was the last time you received, uh, comment from the neighbors regarding those? You can.
Oh, sure. Yeah.
Okay, I can't call me time.
Not recently.
Not within the last year or so.
Bless you.
Thank you. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Bennet, who would like to go next?
I have a question. Um, sorry, apologize for, for coming late, and if you already covered this, but I, in, in the letters, I think, um. To the planning department and to, uh, Mr. Earls, mentioned that if, if you received a legitimate complaint about the noise. Or question about it, that you would have the study done at, at that time.
Yes.
Which to me seemed very reasonable, but I guess the, beg the question, what would a legitimate complaint be?
Right, that's a good question, and, and I, I, we would, I think, first do what we always do is go and try to assess it. Because, you know, we weren't, we're interested in that as well, I mean, i- if it's making excessive noise, it's a potential that there's. Uh, something wrong with it, so we want to address that, and we do very regular and significant maintenance to keep the wind turbine going. So we're aware of all its mechanical, uh, you know, operation at all times. So we would look into it, and if we could ascertain that, yeah, that there's some, definitely something. Uh, different sounding, then we would, uh, um, first order of action would be to shut, stop it. And then, uh, but then to measure it as well, I mean, uh, if we could find no real mechanical problems with it. And, uh, um, you know, I, I can't address, uh, uh, exactly, um. You know, what you were referring to is this, the noise, but I. But I appreciate what you're saying, I will say, though, that, you know, depending on wind direction and wind speed. Uh, and some other factors, the wind turbine in certain directions will, uh, have, you know, lesser or greater sound. And, uh, you know, that's why we, um, so you may be looking at the wind turbine one day. And it could be totally silent, and then another day, just because the wind is blowing away from you. Uh, um, or I should say blowing at you could be bringing the sound, uh, through the wind. So that's why we have, uh, tested it, it, uh, at a variety of different days, different wind speeds and different wind directions. And, I mean, I'm not saying that the wind turbine doesn't make any noise, it does. But the noise it makes is within the city's ordinance. Uh, in what we were permitting for.
That's my question, thank you.
How about Mr. Shagnon or Mr. Junta, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I'll go next, um, I noticed in the reports, those, they concentrated on three different wind speeds, like three, six, nine, I think. Yet, um, yet the unit can run a whole after fifteen. So there's a, there's a quite a large band of operating speeds, ten to fifteen. Where they admit it makes more noise, they, I didn't see it documented.
So, um.
And I know the wind regime probably, it doesn't run up there that often, you know, fifteen miles an hour is pretty, pretty steady wind. Um, fast, uh, but somewhere in that ten or fifteen, I assume it's, it's making the most aerodynamic noise it can.
I think you're right, but I also believe, and I believe talking with Doug on this. That when you get to those higher speeds, the ambient noise is so high that there's, there's no reg, you know, uh.
It's not difficult to see it above it?
That's right. The, the ambient sound at over fifteen miles per hour becomes so high that the sound of wind machine is no longer creating decibels that are. Uh, detectable above that.
Uh, the other question.
They have measured it in those beats.
Yeah, um, the other thing was, it looks, I couldn't tell from any of the studies which direction it had yard. Like if it was facing north or south or east or west, because I think wind turbines put out the majority of their aerodynamic noise downstream.
That's right.
As, as the blade passes, the noise is behind.
The wind is carrying the sound.
Sounds with it, um, which would be great if it was towards route one, all the time.
Yeah.
Uh, but there must be a time when it flips around, when the, I guess the wind would be out of the north northeast. Where the tail of the unit would be facing back into the industrial park.
That's right.
And you might get more noise, but I, I didn't see anything, and I didn't comment it on directional, because when, you know, if you're standing in front of a wind turbine, you may not hear it at all. Birds fly in, right, they don't hear it at all, um, but the back is where the majority of the noise is. Uh, it still seems fairly small, the biggest noise was seventy-five dB, my, my voice is probably sixty-five. So it's, it's still pretty mu- pretty mild.
It is, I mean, it, there are other noises coming from the industrial park that I think sometimes people are not aware of.
Right.
Uh, where they're coming from.
Yeah.
Um, uh, again, I don't want to pretend that the wind turbine doesn't make.
Right, right.
But, um, uh.
I guess the, the good thing is, there's no, it doesn't seem to have any pattern or record of people walking to your door saying the thing is screeching and making a racket. It, that, that's a positive sign. I have no other questions.
Mr. Junta, do you have any questions?
Sure, I, I have a few, so what's the lifespan of, of the wind?
That's a great question, uh, thank you for asking that, so this particular machine is, uh, uh. Um, it's, uh, designed for a twenty-five year lifespan. Um, I personally don't think it will make it that far, uh, I wish it would, but, uh, we don't think it will. And I believe for that reason, the special permit was, uh, twenty-five years, or maybe twenty-eight years. It may be a little longer than that, and it was sort of, when we created the ordinance in the city, it was, um, they looked at that. They said, well, what's the, uh, lifespan of this, so, um. Uh, so, I could talk a lot more about this subject, because the, the question begs what to do when it's. You know, no longer repairable, yeah.
Well, where, it appears you're about fifteen, sixteen years in.
That's right, it's about fifteen years, yeah.
Okay, now, you have mentioned that you had studies from two thousand and eight to two thousand and fourteen. Is there a gap of years before the two thousand and four, uh, two thousand twenty-one study? Or has there been studies done every year?
So the, I'm not sure if that's, if there wasn't another study in there, but we did another study in twenty-one. We did have a number of years where the turbine was either not operating or barely operating. We had some major mechanical issues that we had to repair, we had to put a new generator in and, uh. Um, uh, some major work to the hub. And the turbine, uh, this particular make and model, uh, is no longer supported anywhere in the world. We're the last standing operating, uh, turbo wind six hundred in North America. So when we, uh, when a part, uh, a, a major part, uh, um, uh, wears out. Uh, we have to, uh, um, figure out how to repair it ourselves, and sometimes it means actually building that part. But, uh, I mean, the, the, the major parts are, are available, like generator and gearbox, et cetera. But, you know, all the, uh, complicated, uh, circuit boards, for example, some of the, uh, you know. Um, control equipment, uh, is, uh, difficult and impossible to find. So we've had more downtime than we would like with this turbine.
Twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, that it was, uh, non-operational.
Right, okay, um, and then the other question is, is from the ordinance that was up there. It said that you would be, you would be providing operating data, energy production, and operating days. Has that information yearly been given to the city, is that public?
Yes.
People to see that, and do we, do we have every year of that?
We do.
So there was a period of time, really this letter.
Yeah.
Um, uh, back in twenty fourteen, where it was not being, um, reported to the city. However, in the package that was, um, submitted for this meeting, all of that data was provided.
Okay, all right, and then I guess the last question I have is, um, I, I know from living in Newburyport. Um, that the windmill was controversial at the time, and my question is, was that language? Put in for the, um, the buy-in of the neighbors? Uh, to be certain things?
I don't, I can't answer that, to be honest with you, but I think that language was put in because they were modeling the ordinance after other ordinances. This city and study, this was the first wind turbine to be permitted in Newburyport, and one of the first in the whole region. So we were the first on the North Shore of Boston to install a, you know, a large scale wind turbine. So there was a lot of, uh, um, you know, learning from all sides going on. But I think that that was typical to some of the other permits that they had studied at the time.
Right, and just, just so you know where, where I'm coming from, I, I walk the rail trail all the time. I see a wind turbine all, all the time, I, I just get worried if things are put in place for the protection of the neighbors. Or I, I don't want to take those away from the neighbors, if they, if that's something they felt like they've got, uh. That's compliments, if, if you know what I'm saying, um, for, for this to be built. But I, I don't care your turbine, I, I, it's never affected my life, I've walked past it a million times. I'm just worried that we should get about what we did in two thousand and eight. And then something happens and people say, oh, well, we have things in place, and then they find out that this board took those things out of place. I'm just a little concerned about that, maybe it's the former city councillor and they. Um, but that, that's the only thing that right now is, but I, I don't have any issue with your turbine at all, so. It's my own.
Okay, thank you, um, I, I just have one question, it's kind of a follow-up to Ms. Scow's question, I, and. The, uh, is a question of, uh, who decides if, uh, if a complaint is legitimate? Uh, and I can imagine a situation where a neighbor sends a letter to you and to the city and says, hey, we think we have a legitimate complaint. Who decides, is that, do you decide, does the city decide, who decides what's a legitimate complaint?
Um, sorry, can I defer to you as chair, but, uh, do you mind if I speak to that briefly?
Sure, please.
Uh, sure, I defer to the board, and obviously, Mark, if you want to speak to his athletes, the applicant here, but, uh, just from the office's perspective, and just to clarify. And, and actually, in response to everyone's comment, uh, their question, my sense would be, uh, I have an abundance of caution, let's say. Um, if, if this is approved, uh, my suggestion would be to make the condition of the language include that if the, uh. Um, if, if this is approved, uh, my suggestion would be to make the condition of the language include that if the, um, the zoning administrator determines that there's a verified complaint, that this report would be done rather than leaving it to the discretion, so to speak, of the applicant or the property owner and so forth. Uh, that would provide a little bit more of a, a measure of, um, you know, um, you know, third party, you know, sort of evaluation of that question, I guess. Uh, but again, I'm going to the board and the applicant.
I guess on the flip side, it also would provide some protection to the applicant. Right? I mean, you don't want to be in a position to have to do more than annual studies because we have a neighbor that keeps complaining.
I agree, yeah.
It's something that is, uh, you know, an arbitrable standard in some sort of way protects all parties.
I mean, it's the city's obligation to enforce the ordinance. It's not individuals. The city has all the, all the tools to do that. And they do, I'm sure. So.
You know, I, I, I agree. That's a creative suggestion from, uh, from Andy Port. Does the app, is the applicant comfortable with that, uh, language?
Yes, that seems fair to me. Uh, I mean, that takes, I, I, I mean, as Ken said, it's the, uh, um, you know, it's the city's job to enforce that. Like any other noise that were, if there was somebody complaining that, hey, this person is making too much noise, I would think the city would come down and investigate and see, well, yeah, that is a lot of noise. Or geez, it doesn't really seem like it warrants a, uh, uh, a, you know, a full, uh, in-depth sound study. Because again, I just want to, these noise studies, surveys are very, you know, they take, you don't just come down with a meter and measure it. It has to be done at many different times, at all different times of the day, uh, to get an accurate, uh, uh, study. And then, um, uh, it goes through a fairly, you know, in-depth process of evaluation of that information to produce a report that is useful to us. So, um, I think that's a fair suggestion and we would be comfortable with that to answer the question.
Mr. Chair, could I just ask a couple more questions?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank, thank you. Uh, yeah. Could you put the, sort of the picture of the windmill and the noise neighborhood? So I see the, as I'm looking at this photograph, I'm seeing the windmill in the upper left. So the nearest residence would be across the road to the right, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. How far is the wind turbine from your right-hand boundary as I'm looking at this photograph? Roughly, do you have an idea?
Well, that, so that's a good question. So the prop, if you look at the building there, it's two hundred feet wide. So I'd say it's about five hundred feet from the property line there.
Yeah.
Guessing.
Gotcha. And where is the nearest resident?
I think they, as I recall, this is, uh, it's roughly eight hundred or nine hundred feet away. It's got across, directly across the street of Route one. But honestly, I think.
When you say eight and nine hundred feet from the turbine or from your property line?
I think would be from the turbine.
From the turbine.
I think so, because if that's five hundred feet, the width of the property, um, so the building's about a thousand feet long, like five hundred feet wide. I'm just guessing now, looking at that. But, uh, uh, but I also do believe from the original, um, application that the, the closest residence was roughly eight hundred feet away.
Okay.
But Ken, I think, uh, it's actually the residents that are higher up on the hill that probably are getting the most, you know, sound or, you know, uh, from it because they're more directly across from the, the turbine itself.
Thank you for explaining. I appreciate your candor.
So how, how far is that? So I just, uh, for clarity, I just tried to throw up from our, our mapping software, just, um, about six hundred and forty-five feet to the condos that were recently built off Route one.
Those weren't there when we built the wind turbine.
Right, they were, they were real more recently. Uh, but, but that's the closest residence. And that's about six hundred and forty-five.
That's so, yeah. Thank you for those questions.
Okay, if there's no more other, uh, questions from the board members, uh, we're to the point where we should be deliberating on whether or not, um, this is minor. If it's not minor, then basically we have to notice the, uh, the abutters and, and do a hearing. So, um, so I don't know who would like to begin, but we need to decide whether this is a minor modification.
Well, I will move that the request to eliminate the sound, the annual sound study be treated as a minor modification.
Okay. And I assume you mean with the, uh, proviso that, uh, if there's a complaint, uh, the, the planning department decides whether it's legitimate and a sound study would then occur, right?
Yeah, I thought, yeah, we can do that now. One fell swoop.
Okay, sorry. So that minor, uh, and approve their request with the condition that the office or the zoning administrator determines if, if there's an instance that requires a request.
I don't, how do other people feel about that?
Yes, I'll, I'll, I'm happy to go next. I would agree. I would think that this is a minor modification with the condition that if there's a complaint, that's the sound, a legitimate complaint does identify by the zoning administrator, that a sound study be done. In that respect, I don't think the neighbors are losing anything in the process. Because if there's a, you know, they can have the study done if there's a reason to have the study done.
Thanks. Anybody else? Bud or?
I, I agree, I agree. Yeah, that was Bud.
Yeah, I hear you. And, uh, Mr. Jenta?
I, I, I have to say, I'm a little, I'm a little split on it only because, um, sort of one of those original conditions to erect the, the, uh, the turbine. And, um, I'm a, I'm a little split on it. I'm not sure that, I'm not sure the neighbors know we're here having this conversation. And I don't know how they would feel, Bud. I may give a majority, a minority opinion on that, but it is my opinion.
Yeah, I, I, in my own opinion, I, I kind of agree with the first three of you who spoke that this seems like a good solution. But I also agree with what I just heard that, you know, it, it seems, I mean, the real question is, should we go through the process of advertising it and sending out a notice and letting people know we're doing this? Uh, it seems reasonable to me to do it, but I, I, you know, if this was something to do with setbacks or massing or something that we do all the time that we're very comfortable with, uh, that would be one thing. But this is the first wind turbine I've seen in over four years on the board and, uh, I'm, I'm just not that comfortable. So I, I, I realize it's a pain to have to advertise and, and set out letters, but, and I'm not sure it'll change anything because I think we have a good solution here, but I'd kind of like, I, I feel it would be better to let the abutters, at least give them a chance to chime in. And I, I'm basically kind of agreeing with what I just heard. So, uh, Andy, what does it take? I forget with a minor modification, is it a majority vote or is it five out of?
We typically treat that as a simple majority vote, uh, of the board.
Okay. Well.
It's not the initial, uh, permitting of the use in question. It's just, uh, a detail of the permit, so.
Can, can I just comment on, uh, Ken, on Larry, on your complaints, which are, yeah, legitimate? I, I would just say this, that conditions that were imposed in, in oh eight, to me now, at least that condition regarding the implementation of an annual test seems to have served its purpose. And in my view, to continue with that for the only reason that it was there in oh eight and we're now in twenty twenty-four, seems to me, uh, not to be faithful to, to what we ought to be doing. That is protecting from, and got, and, you know, uh, being concerned about, but, uh, obviously stated concerns of which there have not been any. We have, you know, five years of tests. We have no violations. Uh, based upon these reports, we have no, uh, objections, violations noted by the city. And it's not unusual, at least in my experience, to see conditions have an expiration date. I know there aren't in this, but I think it would be, uh, I think we would be honoring our obligations to the neighbors as well as our obligations to the applicant here. I take your points.
I appreciate that.
If I, if I could just ask you another question, Andy, did you say that in more recent applications, that the staff is given discretion to, to take out some of these conditions?
Yeah, sorry, just to clarify, um, so, yeah, in, in more recent decisions, this is, uh, been a number of years now, but for both the planning board and the zoning appeals, uh, because there are oftentimes these very minor things that are being tweaked, like literally like, you know, six inches of some, you know, minor thing that has nothing to do with the setback in the lot line, but some minor sheet of a window on the side or some, you know, minor sheet like that. So, um, in essence, the board has decided that it's not worth the trouble overall to bother the board, bother the applicant coming in for something like that. So we've put some bullet plate language in the decision that allows the staff to review something if it's deemed minor. We talked about that internally, the zoning administrator and I, and if we have any reason to believe that there's something that's something to the original approval or it's going to be considered, you know, major in any way, we send the applicant back to the board. We actually are on the side of caution there and send, you know, more back than, you know, just to be sure. Um, but, uh, at the end of the day, um, there are, there have been, you know, miscellaneous minor things that are changing. We never approve anything of that nature. We think it's in any way substantive to the board's original approval, we always send the applicant back. In this case, this is like a lot of the older decisions that had no provision like that whatsoever. And so, um, you know, you can imagine with the number of permits out there going on, if somebody needs to modify something very minor, but has to come in and wait for, you know, several weeks to the board, you know, coming in, you know, a lot of process just to do some minor tweak like that. That was the way the board wanted to balance both boards. It's like you wanted to balance, uh, between sort of, what was I describing, sort of wasting every time with going through this extra process to do something that's relatively minor in nature. This is something, as you can see here, you know, it's a little just, just boy, um, well, the office doesn't have the objection for the approval of this, this component here and modifying it as we talked about. Um, it's understandable in context that the board should probably make that decision here in the context of the original approval rather than the staff. And so, um, for instance, on the whole spectrum, even with that language, we might have considered this to be, you know, something that you go back to the board. So that helps it all to clarify.
Okay. Does anybody else have any comments or, I, I, I would add one comment, which I, I found, um, I found Greg Bennet's, uh, um, comments to be compelling that, uh, about how we got here and it's been a long time and there have been no complaints. And we have a system where if people do complain, it'll be looked into. So I, I guess I can be more comfortable. Anyway, would somebody like to make a motion?
Um, you make a motion.
With the condition. I move that we treat the, uh, with the requirement to perform annual, uh, uh, sound and noise tests at the facility, to be removed from the application, be treated as minor modification with the condition that, uh, the obligation will be imposed if the zoning officer uh, determines that there has been a, um, a violation of the city's noise ordinance.
Is there a second?
I'll second that. Mr. Shagnan?
All right, we have a motion. It's been seconded. Um, on a minor modification, are we supposed to like confer again or do we just vote? Andy, what do we do?
Uh, we should vote, uh, and I would just note, uh, a vote doesn't happen all the time. When you have remote members, it should be roll call, uh, just for the record.
All right, we'll roll call. Uh, so Mr. Shagnan?
Yes.
Mr. Bennet?
Yes.
Ms. Scow?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Jenta?
No.
Uh, I'll vote yes. So that's, uh, four in the affirmative. The motion passes. Um, and I guess thank you very much.
Uh, we'll, the office will return to you. There'll be a certificate of vote that we'll, we'll discuss here tonight and the board's vote. So you'll have that sort of circle back to you, uh, by Ken or Jennifer, sure.
Thank you all.
Thank you. That was, uh, that was an interesting one. That, that concludes our business. Uh, it, I think we have minutes to approve. If somebody would like to move the approval of the minutes or any discussion of the minutes?
I'll move approval of, um, the minutes.
Three twenty-six?
Oh, yeah. March twenty-sixth. Thank you.
But up there. I'll second the motion to approve the minutes I submitted.
Okay, um, I guess since I'm remote, we'll go around the room again. Uh, Mr. Shagnan?
Yes.
Mr. Bennet?
Yes.
Ms. Scow?
Yes.
Mr. Jenta?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So that one's unanimous. So now we have updates from the chair or the, I have none, or the planning director. Do you have any updates, Andy?
Uh, no, just two things real brief. Uh, one is that we are expecting still at this point, uh, Carif North from Murphy Hesse, Tumi and Lahane, our legal counsel, to be attending the meeting on the twenty-third. Um, we'll touch base if there's any reason for that to change. Uh, we had talked previously about having her come in and talk about short-term wind units, um, the criteria for review, uh, prior to getting an application. We're expecting that application or do maybe to be sometime in, uh, going to May, maybe at this point, so we'll see. Um, but, um, that's just an FYI that that's, uh, we're expecting in the next meeting to have a discussion. We're probably at the end of the meeting, I assume. Um, and, um, the other thing I just wanted to know was, uh, although it's not, this board does not typically, hasn't typically taken the role of providing advice for zoning changes per se. Um, I just wanted to throw it out there that given we're having discussions right now about the whole MBK communities requirements, if you've been tracking that at all, um, and where we do the zoning that actually applies with the state versus other zoning that might be done. Uh, I realize I'm not giving you the full presentation of all the different facets and pieces to consider and all that. But if you have any particular thoughts on that or questions or, you know, concerns, um, feel free to relay those to me so we can take those into account as we're doing whatever the outcome is there. Uh, we're currently discussing with the city council, the working group, including planning board members, um, about, you know, how to resolve that. And we've thrown out various different maps as, as alternatives, uh, you know, in different areas. But largely, we're talking about expanding the forty-yard district, which is right around the trade station here. So, uh, if you have any questions or thoughts about that, you know, we know, you know.
Are you going to do it by an overlay or are you just going to expand the existing?
Um, the current district is an overlay, so I would assume here that the expansion will also be an overlay. Um, and so, uh, well, it doesn't mean that we couldn't necessarily alter the underlying zoning, for instance. Here, um, what has primarily been discussed of late is, uh, expanding down Parker Street, uh, some of this section of Parker Street, uh, which that incidentally is across the street from our near, you know, the, the Marquise facility. Um, but going a little further than, because you already have one and three Boston Way that were recently constructed right across from, from our country's incidentally. So, um, there's been discussion there about expanding the forty-yard district. There's a whole spectrum of criteria. Uh, and, you know, we have to take into account in making the decision and some of it comes down to where we get credit, where we don't. Um, what parameters the state, there's a whole bunch of layers of parameters we have to follow in order to have a compliant district, so to speak. So, uh, I realize I'm not summarizing all that, but in large part, their focus has been, um, we did talk about using Story Avenue and Low Street, uh, but that has been largely abandoned for strictly working off of the existing forty-yard district. The one caveat that would give to that is, um, a expansion, sorry, I should, maybe just for, for graphical reference. Um, I did actually have a, uh, some back of our forty-yard district, but, um, the, um, sorry, just to, just to make it a little easier for you to worry yourselves, um.
Are we the special permit granting authority or is it the planning board?
No, you are not. Uh, the, and it's actually technically not a special permit. It's as of right permitting with design review, so it's considered a plan approval. Um, not even technically the same term as a site approval, but basically similar. Um, so in essence, it's the planning board and that's why I say it's, uh, you don't have a statutory authority to, or you need to give, you know, advice to the city council procedurally. But, um, if you have any thoughts on this, obviously the more feedback we have the better. But there's been discussion recently of, um, here of, uh, expanding the forty-yard district to go this way, essentially to grab what's behind the way development. You don't see this map that I produced a couple of years ago. Um, and it's right in this location here. Um, and, um, that only makes up a couple of units really. But, um, building up the more, to make more units than the existing forty-yard district, which is like two, three, three quarters, I should say, of what we need to comply with the state. We already are ahead with this forty-yard district. To do that, there's been discussion of going down Parker Street in this section here as being a potential place to do that. Uh, the other location that's been discussed more recently is, um, going up Route one to Emperor. Um, that has some other questions implications because we'd be looking at essentially, um, where the, uh, the, um, Timberline, uh, wood, wood facility is. Um, and it's sort of like between the next to rail trail, essentially that section of, uh, Low Street that goes right into the rail trail. Um, whether or not we make a district that's contiguous between Emperor, crossing underneath Route one and opening the rail trail going there. Um, my inclination is to, is to look at this Parker Street section here, um, you know, myself on the whole spectrum. But that's because you have, you have to understand like the different facets, something to keep in mind, but, um, but that's where the discussion has gone to date. Uh, so if you have any particular thoughts, it could be something else beyond this. Um, a lot of ideas have been thrown out, but in essence, there's a, there's certain parameters you have to follow and that's where the, the conversation has tracked to date is it coming off the forty-yard district. And there are various reasons for doing that, um, that keep greater control in the city. So, yeah, sorry.
Um, so how much of this land will you lose control of as the city?
Um, it's a great question. So, um, it, uh, when we say lose control, uh, it's a, so in essence. In essence, um, the, we lose more control if we do a new district. And that's one reason, for instance, why I'm hesitant to do like a standalone district up by the Emperor Low Street area. Uh, the reason for that is because with the forty yard district, the state is giving us the permission to expand our boundaries of the district and use the same parameters, including the affordable housing percentage we've gotten. Um, which is pretty substantial bonus from the last couple of years that we've gotten.
And stay in control.
And we stay in better control of our local zoning, and I would generally, although I I completely understand why the state's doing this, and I support, you know, I understand why they want to have housing, why they want to have any of transit. I am more inclined to keep new report having as much control in some of the more sensitive areas of the city, so, um, and this is not to say that, I mean, means put it somewhere else, but. Rather, I actually do think this would be a good beneficial place to have housing, because then going forward, people will be looking for more housing in close parks and your places of employment. So to me, this is actually going to be bolstering our business part and then the transit station to combine. But also putting housing where we need it, but also keeping it in the twenty five percent affordability um, threshold that we want, so to speak. As opposed to defaulting back to what the state is now doing, which is basically ten percent or possibly up to twenty, but not any higher than that. So uh, if we were to do that, a district somewhere else like Story Avenue, Low Street, or over at the Emperor Center, some other location, totally separate, not filled out of this. Um, not contiguous or connected, which is the other district now that's being discussed. Um, that would have to be reverting back to the MBTA lower threshold, and would not allow us to mandate as much affordability as we have with that. Um, there's other parameters, of course, you know, I'm not covering on both ends of the spectrum, but uh, but that's one, when you say more control, I guess. I would argue that doing an expansion of forty yard district down by the train station is probably better for keeping control. Um, one thing I have generally assumed is that, um, you know, we're not talking, although there's three areas of the city that the state would consider eligible for this program. The downtown, the train station, and Story Avenue, Low Street area. Um, I have generally assumed that nobody else has disputed this, that, you know, downtown, Waterfront West, things like that, are very different beast, so to speak. And there might be more discussion about an area like that, given its location and its work area and all that, so. Um, we've seen discussion before about Waterfront West where, you know, it happened anyway, so that being the case, we've only looked at the two other areas of the city.
Are are we as a city gonna slow walk this until we see if Milton wins their? That's the state, which then would change everything.
Sure, um, I can appreciate that there's, uh, I don't necessarily think that we have to, um, I actually think, like I said, we're we're like. Nine hundred units out of our existing forty yard district, just from the way that it's calculated here is a little bit different than the original statutory program we did earlier, so. In essence, we get like three quarters of the balance there already, just from our existing forty yard district, but doing a bunch of, you know, paperwork to fill it out. Um, but at the end of the day, doing the expansion to me of like three hundred units isn't necessarily a bad thing either, and isn't. Uh, so hard to to accomplish or problematic for the city in terms of the lady should have, in my view, that warrants going that direction. However, uh, there may be a few other communities that are either having difficulty or contemplating, you know, pushback.
Yeah, I just hate to see the city council make a decision, um, that has ramifications and then find out, oh, we should have waited.
Sure. Yeah, I don't think that, um, you know, I I can't recommend that route, I also don't necessarily, I do think the state will pursue it to some degree. I don't know whether or not there'll be any spectrum of, you know, uh, of things like that, but to me, it's um, not necessarily the path that we need to do, I guess, is the way I look at it.
Does the forty hour housing with the twenty five percent affordable housing, that's a higher requirement? Than the MBTA community, which you said is ten to twenty percent? Is the twenty five percent a requirement of forty hour?
Yeah, it's a little bit um, counterintuitive in my view, the MBTA piece coming, you know, more recently than the forty hour piece here, mainly because uh, in forty hour. Under that program, you had to have at least twenty percent to make it eligible district, at least twenty five, twenty percent of the units had to be affordable. You could choose to go up to twenty five, we did that consciously for a good reason. Um, primarily, you're creating five more units out of every hundred units of project, you're getting five more units that are actually affordable, but. We also were very cognizant that, and this is another idiosyncrasy in the different statutes that kind of overlap here. But in forty B, you have to keep in mind all these different statutes and what's going on in these pieces, but. In essence, under forty B, if you have a rental project that's proposed and and twenty five percent of those units are affordable. The subsidized housing inventory that's used to determine whether or not where we can have a safe harbor from unwanted or inappropriate forty B projects that might be too dense for a certain area elsewhere in the city. That we might be concerned about more so, um, in this case, the um, forty B requires you to have, if you have twenty five percent of units that are affordable as a rental. We get all hundred of the units, or hundred percent of the units counted on the SHI, the something that's housing inventory. So we're getting credit for all, for the makeup projects that are rentals, we're getting credit for all the units in the building, even though only twenty five percent of them are actually technically. Meeting the affordability threshold, that's because the state was also recognizing the importance of creating rental housing as a specific subset of those, you know, housing that's needed. Um, by a segment of the population, so, um, so they're giving more credit for rentals essentially than for, you know, for sale units. Um, and in essence, um, that's where the biggest bang is that we've gotten for our buck in terms of, you know, protection of local zoning, so to speak, and it'll be effective. What happened earlier in the city maybe more so, um, the um, the other piece of course being of five units that would come out of a project would be affordable at that threshold.
So is it possible to expand this forty yard district just by putting buffers around it that are MBTA without making it? I mean, I guess I'm saying, why are we? What, do we need to have the twenty five percent threshold in the additional units that we're adding on to this area?
We don't need to have that threshold, we can go lower, we can go down to the ten percent that uh, of the the sort of war of of the MBTA side of it. Um, but most of the discussion that we've had to date is there on the side of, we'd rather keep wherever we can the twenty five percent. And especially being, you know, if we're going to reduce that threshold, do we want to do it, and if so, where?
And is that just a policy reason that people are in favor of affordable housing, or is that getting us something like you're saying in at other areas of the city?
I think two things, I think it's both of those factors, I think for new report, you know, depending, maybe we have a lot of historic areas, some sort of, you know, neighborhoods. Um, in terms of character, so to me, it's actually both facets, and and it depends on your perspective, what what should be achieved here. Some people are more interested in satisfying the state without necessarily creating a substantial number of new units. Some people want to create new housing, some people are focused on how do we get the affordable units out of, you know, it. Um, but um, so I guess it depends on what we, what you're you're trying to achieve, but. Here, I think we get bigger bang for our buck if we do a twenty five percent threshold, so uh, because we're one, creating more affordable housing, we're not just creating housing, we're creating more affordable units. Uh, if you consider that, those numbers of the state uses affordable, those are affordable, um, then um, you also get this, you know, better protection. Uh, under safe harbor status, which is another state statute, just to be mindful of from a land use perspective, because um, the the. You know, whenever you're not in a safe harbor status, is a potential board developer come in and say, I don't like your local zoning, it's not dense enough for me, I want to do this. And I'm gonna basically toss your zoning out the window, and as long as I do twenty five percent of units in my project that are affordable, which is back up to our forty yard threshold. They can basically override any of your design constraints and things like that, which may not be beneficial or desirable, so. Waterfront West came up, uh, and there also was more recently proposed on Dexter Lane, there was a concept proposed by by a developer of um. Of a forty B in that location, which they seem to have started walking away from that idea, but um, sixteen units uh, on a lot that right now they're talking about maybe doing four.
Is there any sort of correlation between affordable housing units and plates in the school district? I'm just curious about the impact on the school district.
I don't have the data behind that, um, I, and I mean, again, there's also a million different sources of that data, so it's hard for me to say like, which I would feel comfortable relying upon. Um, there are a bunch of different sources of data for that, however, with the forty yard district, the um, there's a provision in there that, and. MBTA, in essence, the forty yard district has one limited provision that actually requires a developer to, I forget the exact number, but the ratio, but is. They were trying to make sure that there was a sufficient ratio of three bedroom units, like a bulk provision, but a sufficient ratio of three bedroom units in the affordable section. Uh, not, you know, having a developer come in and say, well, I'm only gonna do one, two bedrooms for the portals, right, so they were kind of making sure. That the developer wouldn't skimp on three bedroom units in the affordable uh, units. Um, however, um, the main point maybe is that under MBTA communities, the state does not want or will not permit um, restrictions relative to. The types of units or the number of, I'm sorry, the number of bedrooms that are going on in those units will be restrictions, things like that, they don't want to have these. Other limitations on the housing units, they just want to be multifamily available to anybody, so to speak, so they don't want to have um, restrictions of that nature that might then. Give a better prediction of how many bedrooms we can add, how many units, you know, uh, children, children, is that gonna predict?
No data on the number of affordable housing units and the impact on the school system.
Um, I would say it's harder to predict under MBTA, because there's no constraint we can set by local zoning to determine what the ratios might be of one bedroom, two bedroom, three bedroom or studios. Um, so it's um.
MBTA communities, just public transit money has no, they're not gonna give any money to help towns with school districts, for example.
Um, yeah, MBTA communities is very different than forty R, and the way at the best area of strategy is like forty R is almost like the carrot approach years ago. They said, you know, we'll give you financial incentives if you do zoning, and we decided for various reasons to do that, we got two million dollars for the sewer lift station that's down on Grab Road now. Um, but um, so that was more of a carrot approach, this is basically the stick approach, um, with a simplified but. Different reconstructed, you know, with different parameters and some of them being, you know, maybe more or less better, better, worse. Um, but it's the same sort of thing, what has in your transit, you know, denser, multi family, right? Um, but we're requiring you to do it, as opposed to saying, we're gonna give you grant incentives, the state, I'm sure will parallel some grant incentives with this stuff. But it's not the same strong correlation to an incentive, it's more of a mandate that you do it regardless of of these other things, so, yeah.
But expanding the forty yard community, do you get the the incentive?
We get the incentive payments when, if somebody were to develop in the forty R and expanded, we get incentive payments when they do. We don't get those incentive payments if it's outside the forty R, so again, just another factor, another reason to me. Why we might want to expand the forty R overall is pros and cons across the spectrum, and I, you know, acknowledge that. But to me, I keep coming back to with all this, I keep now more and more thinking that Parker Street is the right place to do some of this, rather than some of these other locations. We've talked about the spectrum, there's there's certainly pros and cons each of them, but um, but to me, I definitely support the idea of expanding the forty R generically. Um, and I'm, I'm disappointed that the state has set this, this uh, cap at twenty percent, that they were not allowing us under MBTA to do the twenty five percent. Because that's what we would look a little different, it's a look, it's not clearly what the rationale is for that, if affordable housing is important, it's not clearly why there's an arbitrary cap of twenty.
They don't want to pay the incentives. I mean, it's that simple, right, it's always about the money.
About money, yeah, what if, if this area starts to get built out, you you and I had a private conversation about this. Um, are we able to tell a builder? Uh, commercial on the first floor. Build your condos, your rentals above, but don't destroy our commercial district and turn it into a residential district. It's supposed to be a village, you need stores to be a village.
That's a great question, um, yeah, actually, in our um, zoning district, what we did was, we mandated that the first. The developers basically were gonna estimate on the first floor to make it viable for those uses going forward, one and three blocks away, it was acknowledged, they may not be able to have enough. Rability of residents there to support a use right off the bat, so we said, show us you've designed the first floor to be, you know, as much opening as possible and as ceiling heights. Uh, available, and then, you know, we understand that you might be able to work units starting off, and maybe down the road, we'd have a little more of that. Uh, you know, true commercial uh, use, so um, Haley Site will actually have a true, you know, commercial use in there as well, or uh. Uh, we're expecting maybe ice cream type shop, like the other thing there, but um, but at any rate, the MBTA communities, um. In order to do that, you you end of the forty R, you can, you, we can press for that to be done from a structural perspective in order to encourage that stuff down the road. But with MBTA, um, regardless of of sort of where we're doing it, the state doesn't want us to be mandating, and we don't actually mandate it in the forty R either. They use the uh, commercial on the first floor, we're we're not able to go quite that far to say it must be commercial. Which is one reason back to the conversation that you and I had was, um, in Story Avenue and Low Street, if Story Avenue and Low Street rezoning does not, is not MBTA. We would be able to say, you must keep, you know, on the first floor, must be active, you know, uses that are commercial or, you know, on that end of this tax spectrum here. Those uses we could maintain, whereas if we go with MBTA, we would not be able to do that. The developer might be able to come in and say, I'm gonna use this particular parcel and I'm only gonna do housing, and you might have housing, housing, you know, so, yeah. Across the spectrum, both forty R and MBTA, it does allow a path for someone to focus more on the housing than say a mix. Um, but it's one reason we're trying to maybe preserve some of the allowance or the control of the mix at say, Story Avenue and Low Street. I would be a little bit less concerned about it in the context here, um, I think there's there's probably a conflict, and I actually prefer to encourage. Um, those first floor uses like that, but under MBTA, they don't really want us to, they want us to allow the multifamily as a standalone use by itself.
And they want to house it. They got spurt for housing, yeah, but we're gonna keep our commercial tax base suit taxed. She need to figure out how to navigate that.
Is this all gonna be done by private contract, or is the city proposing some sort of new domain to to?
That hasn't been run at all, no, not at all. So again, if you have any strong feelings one or the other about whether or not, you know, the district is expanded just where you're that way, you know, it doesn't matter what any way you're thinking of it. If you have one, let me know, because that way I can kind of keep in mind, keep in mind, as we start navigate the spectrum of, you know, opinions of. Give us something that ultimately speaking, the council a lot to, you know, broke up with, um, I don't think it's particularly hard for new report compared to other places, you know, to comply here. Um, uh, I don't think it's necessarily problematic, you know, if we have options available that are logical to me from a land use perspective, where put it. Um, but we have to make a decision at the end of the day where that's going to be.
What does this do to the industrial park? Is this an overlay over part of the industrial park so that the?
As of right now, it would be an overlay, we would do, um, we could ultimately move or get rid of the underlying industrial, you know, zoning that's there. Um, thus far, we've just contemplated, just like the forty hours today, an overlay, so the underlying industrial zoning is still there, there's all this um, western end of the forty yard district. But the overlay allows a developer to come in and say, I'm gonna do housing.
So this this will, if you will, be written by city council with your your office. And the planning board, you know, will be voted on to become a little off for the board.
Correct, correct.
Okay.
Yeah, we just by the end of the calendar year, we have to make the changes necessary to comply with MBTA, and that means first off, deciding where we want to. Do additional zoning, because the existing forty R doesn't quite get us there, I know why, but it doesn't quite get us there.
Now, how come it's not going in the other direction instead of over the industrial park?
Um, down Parker Street?
Like, this side?
So um, long story, I mean, there's a lot of different parameter, but long story short, there's no benefit for us in using the cemetery, we get no credit, so that's a huge, uh, that's what's down there. Um, bunch of wetlands, it's a bunch of criteria that apply. And uh, so, you know, somebody throwing out a whole, you know, rezone the whole Back Bay neighborhood, you know, and it's a lot of different ideas, that's a dicey one, I think. Sure, Larry can appreciate, um, I didn't think that was gonna go very far, but um. There's there's ideas across the spectrum, but unfortunately, every time we have a conversation about it, we have to sort of walk through, oh, by the way, this constraint. Kind of undermines the ability, your appropriateness of doing that one, right, so we have to walk through, uh, and and sort of come back to these limited options we have, there there. Plenty, in my view, to kind of do it responsibly and appropriately, um, but we have to make a decision at the end of the day, and we have to land somewhere, so we're running to the. Um, the maps of each lot, essentially what it can provide at the end of the day, compare it against to this rigorous model, we have to run through these algorithms to kind of, you know. The way the state wants the data split out, but um, at the end of the day, we're basically looking for the parcels, the additional parcels necessary to create that housing. That gap in the forty yard district doesn't already provide.
That has to be in place by December thirty first?
Correct.
It should have been before the city council three years ago.
Well, this wasn't, I mean, this, first of all, the.
It takes them a long time to walk through some of this stuff.
Yeah, I mean, that's that's important, um. I wish it wasn't that complicated, because I actually don't think it needs to be, but uh, but there are many different opinions and perspectives about how we approach that, even the criteria. There was, you know, the schedule, if you're the criteria, we should think we should raise, or we think we should use for it, and of course, we have, not everybody agrees on exactly what the criteria should be.
Sure.
So um, and that's, that's your starting point for evaluating, you know, so um, you know, hopefully it's not one of those things that gets bogged down in committee, it is, you know, like, to me, it shouldn't be something that takes a couple, more than a couple of weeks to.
So you're spanning two different wards, you have two different counselors, you have a group that runs the, you have a group that runs the industrial park. Of all industrial park owners, and then you have the Back Bay neighborhood, and then you have the State Street neighborhood, and they're all gonna want to have their say.
Sure, yeah.
That's a basic complicated.
There's no place to make a zoning trade, well, necessarily, you know.
That's right.
Yeah, I, yeah, I don't necessarily think we need to, and I wouldn't think the Milton approach per se, but I, at the end of the day, um, you know. Folks may not, may not be happy with the mandate, or, you know, happy certain components with it, I'm not happy with the twenty percent cap myself. Um, but at the end of the day, I, you know, I think we have to decide just if you want parcels, we're gonna, we're gonna do it, and um, and get that, you know. Decision made, so we can do the rest of the process involved, getting a package from the state to comply, so.
You're gonna make the best of the bad decisions.
The best, so the word, uh.
Because not everybody's gonna be happy, so you're gonna make the best of the bad decisions.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, the lesser of two evils, as they say, right, so, yeah.
Be original forty R around quite a bit until everybody seems to settle in something they're happy.
That's kind of what the exercise we're doing right now, yeah, and um, we just have to keep walking through the parameters, and you know, every time someone throws out an idea, well, what about this or that? We have to walk through the pros and cons of that, and um, you know, I I would hope in the next week or two, at our next zoning meeting, we'll meet on this with a few of their updates, we had a. Discussion today with the state about some of the parameters, because their model doesn't fully take into account, um, some of the local requirements, you know, they're going on zoning, so they have to kind of make up on the fly. How they want to produce and things, and um, that just makes it more cumbersome, but um, they're just, yeah, sort of that, so. Soon we make the decision, uh, that there will be for the process, so.
Okay. Thank you, Andy, for sharing. Um, I think we're looking for a motion to adjourn.
I so moved.
All in favor? Bye bye.